Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all.
Mr. Dinkert, would you do the roll call, please? Mayor Steen.
Present.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Present.
Councilmember Jordal.
Present.
Hagan.
Present.
Carolyn.
Present.
Enright.
Present.
King.
Present.
Austin.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor. Okay, now, on the adoption of the agenda, we are removing number 20. I don't know if council got that or not, but with the removal of 20, we need a motion.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Item number two, need a motion for approval of the minutes from June 6, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Under recognitions and awards, I have a proclamation here that I would like to read. I think it will be self-explanatory. Wherein Alzheimer's disease, a progressive and neurodegenerative brain disorder tragically robs individuals of their memories and leads to progressive mental and physical impairments, and whereas there are no known treatments to prevent, cure, or even to delay the onset or slow progression of Alzheimer's disease, and whereas an estimated five million people age 65 and over have Alzheimer's disease, and another 200,000 people under age 65 have younger onset Alzheimer's disease, and whereas Alzheimer's disease is the sixth leading cause of death in the United States and the fifth leading cause among the elderly, and whereas the directed cost of caring for those with Alzheimer's to American society is valued at $226 billion and nearly 16 million caregivers provide over $18 billion hours of unpaid care for those with Alzheimer's and other dementias in 2015, and whereas in Minnesota, nearly 249,000 family members and friends cared for people with Alzheimer's and other dementias, providing 284 million hours of unpaid care, with the annual value of this caregiving totaling $3.5 billion, and whereas in recognition of the individuals, families, friends, and caregivers dealing with Alzheimer's disease, the researchers who are seeking a cause or cure, and whereas the city of Austin recognizes the efforts of Alzheimer's Association to promote awareness to fight Alzheimer's disease and other dementias, thereby improving the quality of human life for those living with Alzheimer's disease and their caregivers, and whereas the summer solstice, June 20, 2016, has been declared the longest day, with teams around the world coming together to honor the strength, passion, and endurance of people facing Alzheimer's disease with a day of activity. Now, therefore, I, Thomas A. Steen, Mayor of Austin, do hereby recognize June 20, 2016, as the longest day, and urge all residents to show their support for that day by wearing purple and engaging in a day of activity honoring the strength, passion, and endurance of people facing Alzheimer's disease. We also have Jean Poppy here, Representative Poppy, who wishes, I believe, to address this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and councilmembers. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and thank you very much for doing the proclamation. This morning, Governor Dayton also issued a proclamation declaring today the longest day and in recognition of Alzheimer's disease as well as other dementias. And for me, it's a personal issue, and for many people, it's a personal issue. So it is well-known about how it impacts caregivers. It's also well-known, I think, on how much it impacts our community. It's a very costly disease. It's a very traumatic disease. It's a, as it robs people of their memory, and it robs people of their ability to connect and do what they used to be able to do. So it's definitely something that I wanted to make sure that we in Austin would be familiarized with, because I also want us in the future to become a dementia-friendly community, and so we'll be working on that, and there have been some community meetings on that topic, but we're going to continue to do that. So I just appreciate the opportunity tonight for you to do that proclamation, and thank you for, maybe you can wear purple tomorrow if you didn't wear it today, but enjoy the-
I had it on all day, and I had to change to come here. Wasn't paying attention.
And thank you to those who were able to do that today, and thanks for the awareness. Appreciate it.
Representative Poppy, I think a lot of people didn't know that they should be, you know, wearing purple today, and a lot of people don't understand. I don't. I mean, a lot of people don't. If there's anything that, you know, we as a council or I individually can help you to further this, please let us know.
Absolutely. Thank you. I did leave some brochures in the back room here by the agenda, but also it's Know the Ten Signs, and certainly for people who sometimes forget things, it's a little bit more advanced than that, and usually it really means that people are unable to discern things in the future. They're not able to problem-solve as easily. They have other issues that really become much more frequent, and that's where it kind of goes from being the normal forgetting as we age to this is a disease that is impacting their ability to carry on in their daily activities.
And there is a local awareness group for this?
There is a local awareness group, and it's called ACT or ACT, and so we'll probably be, I know that they met last year a couple of times, but it never really caught hold, I don't think, so we'll probably be having another meeting here toward the end of summer, early fall, to get people re-engaged in talking about it, and hopefully the longest day, the annual event, will become an annual event in Austin and become much more noticeable for people, and so will be much more common.
If you get that information out to me when that meeting is, I can get it to council and-
Yes, please do. Absolutely. That sounds great. Thank you. Is that the proclamation there?
Yeah, you can have this proclamation. That's yours.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Jean.
Okay, and next. Anybody have anything they want to add to that? Okay, next, the consent agenda. We need a motion for that.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Number five, under bids and awards, it's a resolution for receiving bids for an ice resurfacer. Steven?
Yes, our ice resurfacer at Riverside Arena, it was, is original. Actually, we purchased it back in 1997. It's a compressed natural gas unit, and we are looking to replace that ice resurfacer, so we have taken and solicited bids and opened up those sealed bids on Thursday, June 2, 2016. We only received one bidder. The distributor is CTM Services, Inc., and the make and model that they are proposing to bid on the project to meet our specifications was the Olympia Millennium E, which is an eco unit. It is a battery-powered versus compressed natural gas, which will help us with our emissions and our air quality standards in the arena, which is an important thing. The new ice resurfacer cost, I have them detailed there, $150,395. A custom paint color of $1,240. We're also looking at getting a new edger, which would do some of the tight spaces around the boards. That edger cost is just under $6,500, and then we have a $6,500 trade-in allowance for our existing ice resurfacer for a total project cost of $151,625. And we do have this in the budget. It's as part of our CIP. Budgeted for this project, we have $163,320. So we would recommend awarding this bid to CTM Services, Inc., and the new unit takes about one year to construct, so I'll be awarding it now and hope to get it next summer.
Counsel, anything? If not, we need a resolution for item number five.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert. Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor. Thank you. Under petitions and requests, six is a motion approving 2015 audit for the year ending December 31, 2015. Tom, you want to, I mean, we went through this at the work set. Are there any questions on it? Comments? If not, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Resolution, number seven is a resolution approving budget adjustment number four. Tom?
As was discussed at the last work session, we'd like to transfer $600,000 from the general fund, fund balance, to the building fund to help offset city hall remodeling costs, and an additional $650,000 to the risk management fund to help fund losses for the health insurance fund from 2015. After this would be done, if council so approves, our general fund, fund balance would be, unassigned fund balance would be in the range of 45%, which is well within the range the cities adopt or informally adopted in the state's recommended guidelines.
Any questions? If not, we need a resolution. So moved the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert. Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor. Thank you. It is a resolution designated 2016 election judges for the primary and general election. Ms. Council?
Yes, before you is a resolution which appoints the election judges, which we have to do by statute. These individuals are from the city of Austin or very close to, and they have volunteered to be our election judges. They will be trained at one of three training sessions in July, and they have to get a minimum of two hours training. So I would request that you would approve the appointment of these election judges, and then also the locations. We just have that on there, too, just showing the locations of which precincts and where people vote, and you had approved that earlier in the year, too.
Any questions? If not, we need a resolution for number eight.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert. Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor. Thank you. Now, it is a resolution approving a contract for prosecution services with Bodler, Moss, and Foreman. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor. Members, this is for prosecution services for the city of Austin. The financial compensation remains the same as our previous agreement. This is a three-year contract, as was the last agreement, after visiting with the police chief, who's our primary utilization of this resource. He had no concerns raised. Council action is requested to approve the resolution included in the packet, and thereby the contract for prosecution services with Bodler, Moss, and Foreman.
Counsel, any questions or comments? I know we've used this for 20 years, even longer than possibly. Okay, if not, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Dinkert. Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
I abstain from my wife's work today.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero with one abstaining, Your Honor. Thank you. Ten is a motion approving the demolition of 1204 Fourth Street Northwest and 1916 Third Avenue Northeast, with funding coming from the 2016 contingency funds. Do we have any questions?
Mayor, Your Honor, I would just clarify that we haven't gotten any bids yet for the demolition and the asbestos abatement, so we would go through that normal process like we did with the other demolitions that we did earlier. This is simply to clarify where the funding for those activities would come from.
And we'll have to prove it further when we get contracts.
Correct.
Okay. Counsel, we need a motion.
So moved, say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Eleven is a resolution approving engineering consulting services in a wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Lang?
Yes, we have a couple of projects planned at the wastewater treatment plant. We have staff onboard that will complete majority of the work, but in order to meet the state electrical code requirements, we need to have engineered plans that our electrical staff will follow. So this proposal in front of you is to develop, have S.E.H. develop plans for removal of a existing motor control center in the industrial pumping station, and then also to evaluate industrial building to determine classification. So we will work with them to develop those, and then our crews, again, will do the work. The cost for this is estimated at $27,150, and we would recommend awarding that to Short Elliott Hendrickson.
Any questions, counsel? Comments? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Dinkert. Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor. Thank you. Twelve is a resolution approving change orders on the library boiler system. Steven?
Counsel previously approved a contract with Hardy Mechanical to replace the boiler at the library, or two boilers exactly, in the amount of $114,600. Going through that project, we have three change orders on the project. One of them, in order to make the boilers work properly, the gas pressure had to be increased. Well, that then impacted the existing fireplace that is located at the library, so a new regulator had to be placed on that, so there's some costs associated with that. There's also VAV controllers throughout the facility that we had planned on leaving them in place, knowing that there may be a few that were bad as they've gone through the process. Now, fired everything up, we have found three of them that needed to be replaced, so there are some costs associated with that. And then finally, again, during the startup process, they found that there was a chiller valve that needed to be replaced, and again, some of our existing equipment, this is nothing that is part of the new equipment, but it's upgrading and making improvements to the existing facilities. Those three change orders amount to $6,273.33 for a final project cost of $120,873.33. So at this time, I would recommend approving those three change orders and the final construction cost.
Counsel, anything? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert. Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor. Thirteen is a motion authorizing additional funding for sanitary sewer construction on 10th Drive Southeast. Mr. Lang?
Yeah, additional funding and also approving, moving forward with this portion of work. 10th Drive Southeast, that's a county project that the county is working on this year, and we have in our CIP costs to extend sanitary sewer to the adjacent property owners, and then we would reimburse ourselves those costs as homeowners or businesses hook into the sanitary sewer. We'd recoup those costs through our sanitary sewer access charge. So this is going out toward Midtown and the bowling alley out on 10th Drive Southeast. The total cost for this project, based when the bids came in, was $173,797.50. I would estimate this is likely coming in a little bit higher than our estimate of $150,000, mainly due to the high groundwater table and the work required to de-water prior to construction. Looking at the existing properties that are out there, I would estimate that there are about 10 existing parcels that will need sanitary sewer hookups in the future. That could be the near future, or it could be extended out a period of time, depending on their existing septic system. Based on our current sanitary sewer access charge, those 10 properties would account to about $157,000, making up a good portion of the construction cost. Then in addition, the sanitary sewer line would also open up new areas for development and future sewer access charges as well, to again reimburse that fund. So based on that information, I would recommend approving the sanitary sewer extension in conjunction with the county's 10th Drive Southeast project.
Counsel, anything? If not, we need a motion for thirteen.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Fourteen is a motion, or we need a motion resolving the city council into the Board of Appeals.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Fourteen is a motion reviewing a variance request from Bob and Donna Kelly, 811, 11th Avenue Southwest, and this is Holly.
I lost my spot here. I'd kind of like to look at both fourteen and sixteen simultaneously. They're both basically the same issue. Both parties have added decks to their property, and both their properties are situated so that the front of their house is approximately 15 feet from their front property line, and our zoning ordinance requires that if a deck is added to the front of a home and to the front yard, it has to be a minimum of 15 feet back. So the parties are already both starting with a need for a variance, if they add anything to the front of their house other than steps or landscaping. In this instance, the Kelly's, which I'll start with the Kelly's, because theirs was first. They have a front yard or a front entryway that had some cement concrete steps that went into the front door. The, one of the homeowners is, or both homeowners here, oh, no, just Bob Kelly's here tonight. One of the homeowners has a power chair. He needs some, I mean, it's a pretty amazing chair. You can do a lot of things with that, but clearly he needs some better accessibility to the front of his house. He, his wife and him added on this deck, which has about, I think it's a six-foot rise with the first step and six-foot with the second step, so it's about 12 inches above grade. He uses a temporary ramp for that first piece of the patio or deck. He didn't consider, I don't know if he considered an additional handicap ramp, but for the slope that's required for a ramp, it would consume most of their front yard. The area that they have for front yard is pretty small. And that is shown on here, right in this front area here. The planning commission reviewed the materials. They made a recommendation of six to zero that the variance in this instance be granted. They have reviewed the variance ordinance, which requires, or variance statute, which requires that the variance be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, that the variance, if granted, would not alter the essential character of the locality in which the property is situated. The landowner has established that there are practical difficulties in complying with the ordinance, and that the landowner intends to use the land in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the ordinance. And then I can give you more details about the other matter when we get to that one, but if you have any questions about this particular matter.
So he just uses a temporary when he's going in or out to that current new deck that you showed us?
Yeah, they have a temporary ramp that allows him to access the deck.
Instead of the-
And then his deck goes straight into the front, which he was unable to access prior. Although, you know, we look at the individuals living in the residence, but really what it comes down to with the variance is that it's something unique about the property. So that's why I provide the information about the setbacks and where the house is located on the property and the available area for building in.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, we need a motion for fourteen.
Move to approve.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Item number fifteen.
Did you want to go to sixteen?
Can we maybe skip Fox and do that? Do we need a formal?
You want to do sixteen?
Can we skip to sixteen?
Okay, sixteen, and we ready for this, or?
Yes. 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 The Eli property is also situated approximately, the house is situated approximately 15 feet from the front property line, although it is not something that's immediately obvious. This is the area where his property line is located. This is the curb. He replaced a deck in this area. And this is, this is a before. The deck curves out, and this is an after. That is in your materials. The deck replaced an existing deck in a similar location, and we measure from the post back, so this deck is actually, can't lever it out, so it extends further than approximately the seven feet that he is requesting variance for. That's allowed. Again, his property does sit up on a hill. There are other options potentially with landscaping or concrete steps. But it is a kind of a difficult location in order for him to get out of his house with, you know, he needs some kind of landing there. And again, anything that he would have put in there would have required a variance because of the 15-feet limitation. Again, the planning commission found that the following standards were met, that the variance standards were met, and that they recommended six to zero on this matter as well, that the variance be granted.
Okay. Counsel?
Make a motion to approve variance.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay. You want to do fifteen, or?
Yeah, we can go back to Fox.
Okay.
The Fox property is in a, an industrial district. Mr. Fox had come in, talked to us quite at length about it, felt he had enough space there where he wanted to locate his new building, which would be here. This building was removed for proposed new construction. He wishes to expand on that lot. There, again, is not a lot of room for new construction on that property. He is required in an industrial zone to have a 10-foot separation between his buildings on the property line. He has a little over seven feet on this side and about nine feet on the back. He is requesting that he be allowed the variance to build his new storage facility. Again, the planning commission reviewed. Just waiting for my pad to catch up here. The project complies with all building and zoning code requirements other than the sideyard setback. There appear to be sufficient parking spaces for the, that location, even with a new proposed building, which would be a 28-foot by 54-foot structure utilizing this space, again, in between these two buildings. The planning commission, again, reviewed the variance requirements and made a recommendation to grant the variance six to zero.
Counsel?
Need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay. Seventeen. Holly?
Okay. Seventeen, since it's the only one left, I am guessing is my fence appeal. This is from Hormel Foods. They have a property that you are probably aware of, the new R&amp;D facility that they are building right now. They have some mechanical equipment that they would like to screen, and also there would be some decorative fencing or screening around the property and other areas as well. This is the mechanical equipment that this fencing that was used at another location, shown here, would surround. The fence appeal also follows the variance requirements to some degree, but it's also a matter of right that it can be, the fence height requirement can be appealed to the council, and the council can grant a change in height if they find it is reasonable. A fence located within a lot that exceeds six feet in height is allowed with council approval. Here, the need for fencing is caused by exposure of the building's large mechanical systems, and then it'll also enhance the appearance of the building. The planning commission, again, recommended the council grant the request by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Counsel, anything? If not, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay. We need a motion adjourning the Board of Appeals back into the city council.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Eighteen is a resolution granting an on-sale liquor license to El Mogue Bar. And, any questions on it? And...any questions on it? Then we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
And finally, nineteen is a series of three motions granting the Planning and Zoning Department a power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at A 105 13th Street Northeast, Lander Property. Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? B 1108 10th Avenue Southwest, Lawhead Properties. Lawhead Properties Property. Need a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? C is 2616th Avenue Southwest, the Christianson Property. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, are there any citizens here tonight to wish to address the counsel on any matters? Doesn't matter if they're on the agenda, because we're done. Okay, then we come through reports and recommendations. We'll start with Jeremy tonight.
Nothing, Your Honor.
David.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mike.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Janet.
Right before the council meeting, there was a demonstration of the K-9 units that was...seemed pretty well attended and very interesting. So, appreciate law enforcement team, both Sheriff's Department and the Police Department for doing that. Thank you.
Dave? Jeffrey?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Steve?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Judy?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Craig?
Just hoping for a special session.
Okay, and we did go to the league conference, which was pretty informative. I got a thing for the green steps that I forgot to bring in. I'll bring that in next meeting, and it's kinda nice. Do we have any reports?
Yes, Stephen, Ann, and Kim.
Stephen?
I just wanted to mention to the council and the public that we will be doing our first mosquito spray application coming up this Thursday. We have two applications planned before the Fourth of July. We're going to do this Thursday, June 23rd, and then we will follow it up again the following Thursday, which will be June 30th. Both applications are a ground application. Spraying starts at dusk, and they continue throughout the community while the mosquitoes are most active. During the middle of the night, mosquito activity tends to slow down, and if they are not yet complete, they'll stop and then start again in the early morning of the following day. So, you folks can expect that. If they have any allergies or breathing quality issues, we recommend that they close their windows. Also, the mosquito spraying, we do not spray every roadway. That's a common question that we get from the public in that, "I didn't hear the mosquito sprayer go by my house last night." What they do is they take a look at the wind, and they utilize the wind to drift the fog application into specific areas. So, they...depending on the wind direction, they may only hit all of the avenues during one spray application. Say the wind is from the north, they'll spray east-west on the avenues and allow the wind to drift the mosquito spray into the backyards that way. And maybe if we have a westerly wind, they'll spray up and down the streets and allow it to migrate east and west based on the wind. So, I just wanted to mention that to the public. If they think that they did not hit their street, well, actually, maybe we were doing just the avenues that time based on the...based on the wind.
When's the next application? So, there's two prior to the Fourth?
Yep, we have two of them, Thursday, June 23rd, and Thursday, June 30th.
Okay.
Stephen, do you have recommendations for the public, like not leaving standing water or other things that would help with mosquito?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Just those things in general. You know, if they have bird baths, water feeders, things like that, try to limit those as much as possible, because that will only allow for a spot for mosquitoes to migrate to. Yes.
Thank you.
Ann?
The Friends of the Austin Public Library have just done a phenomenal job supporting the public library. They've given us money for additional Wi-Fi hotspots, so we're up to 55 of them now, which has just been a service that's been changing lives. It's...we've had terrific results with that. People are getting their GEDs, they're finishing high school classes, they're able to do online classes from other universities. It's been very powerful.
What is a Wi-Fi hotspot?
A Wi-Fi hotspot is a very small device that you turn on, and then you can connect to the internet through that.
And they can check those out?
You can. You can borrow the internet through the library. How long can they have it out at a time? You can borrow it for three weeks at a time. The tricky part is getting your hands on one. They're very, very popular. So, they work worldwide, so people who are taking a trip or a vacation or need to go visit family somewhere, that's been especially useful during the school year when people have had to go and visit family and take their children out of school, you know, for a short time.
There's no gig limitation out of it?
It's unlimited bandwidth. So, yeah, it's amazing. The Hormel Foundation paid for a large number, and then the Friends, and then also the Winkie Foundation. We used some money from that. So, we've got some grant applications, so it's in for some additional ones. It's been a terrific program. But the Friends also support general traditional literacy with their summer reading program, so they are the funders for all of the incentives that we use during the summer to have children come in and read. It's been a very exciting start to that program, where Children's and Youth Services Librarian has a phenomenal set of activities set up to bring kids into the library, and we've been very successful with some grants for that as well, to get arts and other creative activities in for kids. So, the place is booming. You should come on by and check it out.
And how much...first of all, what's the age range for the summer reading program?
Zero to death.
Okay. That's broad.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm not going to waste to expand.
Yeah. And how much does a Wi-Fi hotspot cost?
A Wi-Fi hotspot does cost money, but it doesn't cost the end-user money.
Right. But I mean, if someone wanted to help or you...how much does it cost?
Thanks, thanks. Yep, if a person were to walk into the library and write us a check for $500, we'd be able to buy a unit and fund the data for two years.
Wow. That's not cheap, though.
No, no, it isn't cheap, but the results are well worth it.
Okay. Kim, do you have something?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I would like everyone to know that our first of two Gene Rowe Memorial Track Meets will be held this Thursday, the 23rd, at West Scott Field. So, it's free for three and up, and adults can run too. We don't see many of those running, but three and up can go. It's free at West Scott Field. The Noon Kiwanis helped sponsor that.
So, how'd the pool opening go this?
The pool opening went well.
For ten days, right?
Yeah, we are up and running, and it's been warm. Things are good. Stop at the pool.
Anybody else? That it? Need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Take a short recess. Meet in a small room across the hallway. Five to 10 minutes.